No, Mayor, thank you.
Questions? No? Okay. All right. There being no questions, I will call the workshop adjourned.
I'll work to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn the workshop. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Five zero. Okay. Do you want to take a little bit of a break or are we ready? You ready? Okay. All right. We're going to move right into the agenda for regular meeting. And it is 4:34, and I'm calling this meeting to order. Ms. Anna, would you please establish quorum?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Norrie Gonzales-DePisa.
Present.
Mayor Protem Ruben Plata.
Present.
Councilwoman Jessica Ortega.
Present.
Councilwoman Marissa Gerlach.
Present.
Councilwoman Aldeita De La.
Present.
Mayor, we've established quorum.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is invocation and pledge of allegiance.
I can have her, please stand.
Heavenly Father, we gather here today under your care and protection. Thank you for your loving kindness that never fails us. Thank you for those with us, that you would guide our thoughts and actions to bring you glory. Strengthen us and fill us with your peace. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the holy and pure justice of God, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The next item is the disclosure of conflicts of interest. Ms. Anna, any file?
No.
Okay. We'll go on to presentations. And the first one is the presentation of award received by City Secretaries Vital Statistics Department.
Our award. And I've got my staff here with us today. If I can call them up here with me, please. Mayor and council, I am pleased to announce that the City of Mission Vital Statistics Division received the five-star service award for 2023 from the Texas Health and Human Services. This award honors vital statistic partners who understand the importance of vital statistics and their impact on the citizens of Texas. This award honors those who go above and beyond the duties of birth and death registration by attending trainings and keeping up with the latest legislation and trends. This, I can proudly tell you, is the eighth consecutive year that we have received this award. And I would like to introduce my staff, who works diligently to meet the criteria throughout the year. We've got Ms. Paula Banda right here. She's our administrative assistant. Patty Leja. And Jessica Alejandra, Alejandre. They're our vital statistics deputies. They're the ones that are the meat and potatoes and do every birth certificate and death certificate that we get on a daily basis. And of course, this award would not have been possible without the support of Anais Chapa, Assistant City Secretary, who is also the Deputy Local Register. Kara Islas, City Secretary Clerk, and Denise Rodriguez, our receptionist. They all come in help when we've got a lobby full of, you know, of customers, and they help the girls to get, you know, all of these records out in a timely matter. I want to thank these ladies for their hard work and for a job well done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Y'all want to come up for a picture?
Yes.
Okay. The next item is our December 2023 Employee of the Month. Ms. Mungia.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today, we are presenting to you our Employee of the Month for December, which is Ms. Anais Chapa, Assistant City Secretary. She was nominated by her peers and her directors, so I'd like to ask everybody to join me up here again, please. The nomination came from everyone. And the nomination reads as follows. "A specific quality that sets Anais apart is her willingness to step up, not only when needed, but anytime she can. Recently, we had a customer who was upset. Anais came over and addressed the citizen. She listened to her and made several calls to find a solution. After making the calls, she explained to the customer how and when the concern was going to be addressed. She did all of this with a smile. The customer thanked her for her assistance and left happy. Her actions displayed professionalism, exceptional customer service, and deescalated the situation. Anais displays passion in all things she does, which can be seen in her work and her attitude. Thank you, Anais. We appreciate you and all you do. Congratulations."
Congratulations.
Anais's family is here as well, so I don't know if you want to ask them to come up.
Morning.
Yes.
He's a team effort.
Teamwork.
Okay. The next item is a report from the Rio Grande Valley Humane Society.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. I'm Dandy Abayi, and we're reporting on behalf of the Rio Grande Valley Humane Society for the numbers for December 2023. Total intake for animals was 139. 110 animals were adopted out. 35 were claimed, and 37 were transferred out, with a return to field of 25. 10 were euthanized, and the live outcome was 207. Total outcomes were 222, with 51 surgeries, and that puts the total live outcome at 89% for the month of December. So they ended 2023 with a 91% no-kill rate in 2023. It's very much something to celebrate. I also just want to take a moment to thank Mayor Protem Ruben Plata, who was present at the Fashion, Passion for Fashion show, where we raised money for the Humane Society this past weekend. And I also want to remind you on behalf of the Rio Grande Valley Humane Society for the Wine and Whisters Gala that will be in Mission at the Mission Event Center on April the 6th, 2023. Please mark your calendars. And I'm sure that you're pleased with these numbers, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? No?
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Next item is a report from the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce. Is Brenda here?
No. Two minutes.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to the next item. Departmental reports. Those were in our packets. Are there any questions or comments? A motion?
I make a motion to approve.
There's a motion and a second to approve the departmental reports as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is citizens' participation.
Yes, ma'am. We have Ms. Fern McClatter.
Yes. It's Fern McClarity. I had a question on the number three, the Rio Grande Valley Humane Society. I know at the last Commissioner's Court, they voted to have the, what is it? Palm Valley Animal over there on Trenton, and the taxpayers would pay $52,000 a month for, I think, a year or two contract, plus they could go up to four years. And my question is with the young lady that was just up here, and I'm working and trying to get other cities, Edinburgh and the county, what do y'all do for educating the public? Because when I look at the money that the county has spent on animals, when I know we have children that are going hungry, I know that the Edinburgh School Districts, and I believe the other school districts, are feeding the children breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And I know during COVID, schools might not have been open, but the school buses were full of food. And so what do y'all do as far as trying to educate the public, the people that live in Mission, on neutering? Maybe the veterinarians and things can help. But I just went on the east side of Edinburgh just a few hours ago out in the country. I never saw so many big dogs, little dogs, running wild. And we know what happens when they run wild. They come home, and then we have 10 or 15 baby puppies, which are precious. But the thing is, the children, to me, are more important. So I'm hoping that you, as a City of Mission, will start and find out how we can educate the people, that this money could be used for helping the public and the children and things that are here, living in your city and in Hidalgo County. And we wouldn't have all these animals, especially the 10 that were put to sleep. So if y'all would check on that, I'd appreciate it. And I also wish that y'all would use the mics, because we can't hear. We're old. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No one else? Okay. We're going to move on to public hearing. The first item is a resolution.
Mayor and council, good afternoon. This is a resolution and first reading. So I'll just give some background real quick. So we did have the workshop on the proposed charter amendments of the last meeting, and we said we would have a public hearing to afford the community a chance to kind of go over what was presented at the workshop, and also to voice their opinions on the proposed charter amendments here at this meeting. This is not the calling of the election. This is not the adoption of the resolution. This is just a public hearing and approval of the first reading, so we can present it to the public in that space. Now, just a recap. Since the last workshop, there were two significant changes that were proposed by the Charter Review Committee that met. I'm trying to remember the date again, but it met sometime last week. I think it was like a Monday or Tuesday. And so they recommended to actually postpone the charter amendment, which was 3A, which created the Public Utility Board.
Right.
And so they wanted to give the city just more time to prepare and plan adequately for that, so they have recommended to remove that. And in this presentation, they'll show that it's been removed. And then also, there was on Section 311, we made a clarification to that, that publication by newspaper was still going to be a resource to publish ordinances, but it also allowed for the city to use other means to get that same information out as well.
Yes.
And so what I wanted to do here was just kind of present quickly the actual ballot language. Just a quick timeline once again. I did want to go through the charter amendments, just because it's the first reading of it, but I'm going to really focus the attention more on the proposed ballot language, because although there are roughly over 30 sections that were changed, when we drafted the ballot language, we were able to condense them in a clear, concise manner that still met the requirements of the law, which is to identify one subject per ballot item. So I wanted to go over that. In the agenda packet, there is the proposed resolution. And as part of the proposed resolution, there's Attachment A, which includes a redline version of all the changes that have been made. Again, this is just another opportunity for the city to present this, both to the mayor and council, and also to the public to provide more information. We still have, up until the next city council meeting, to incorporate any changes that may be presented here today. So for the first one, the first ballot language, this is just, this is just going to be to amend the city charter to provide that the provisions of the charter shall be construed liberally and give the city all authority that it has, as the law may provide it. And so this would be the proposed ballot language, asking whether Section 1.01 of the city charter may be amended to provide that provisions of the charter shall be construed liberally to favor the City of Mission. So that's the first ballot language. The second one encompasses Section 1.03 to 1.06. And this was the old section that used to give the city authority to expand its boundaries, either by the ETJ or annexation. So what we've done here is we've condensed those down into two sections, and it really goes to really providing the city the maximum authority given to it by the state. Now, we discussed at the last meeting that the state, from time to time, will not necessarily give the city more authority. It tends to take more authority away. But nonetheless, this just gets us into compliance with the state statute and preserves any and all authority that the state may allow the city to do in expanding its boundaries. The next proposed charter amendment goes to Section 2.01. And this would be to simplify the enumeration of powers that the city might have, and just, again, to the fullest extent possible permitted by law. So it's really condensed it down and given it all the authorities it has to do anything that the state would allow. And I know it might be going faster than this, but it has been provided. It was posted along with the agenda and the agenda packet, and all the redlines are available to the public. The next, Section 3.01(c), to the extent permitted by law, that the regular municipal elections of the City of Mission to elect the mayor and/or member shall be held during the November election. So as you see here, it says, to the extent permitted by law. That just says, in the last workshop, we stated that it still needed to be approved by the legislature, but this puts a city in the position to where, when the legislature does approve it, we can go ahead and do it. And so that would be the proposed ballot language. Also, the next ballot language would be in reference to mayor's term limits, and that would be for three-, four-year terms. So this would be the proposed ballot language. 3.06, it just to, the way that was drafted before, it was very specific on to how vacancies would be filled, but this just puts it in consistent with state law, which allows the city council to appoint a replacement if the vacancy is for less than 12 months, and that affords a savings to the city in not having to conduct a special election. So the proposed ballot language would be that. Section 3.09 would be amended to provide that meetings of the city council must be conducted in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. It just wasn't included, but we wanted to make sure we included it in there to be consistent with state law. And that would be the proposed ballot language. And again, all this is included in the resolution itself. 3.11 references amendments to revise a process for publishing city ordinances to also include other means that might be provided by law. And so that's kind of a cleanup, really. 3.14, previously, the audit books were supposed to be submitted to city council, and so it's just more appropriate as to mirror the actual practice currently, to submit those to city secretary's office. So that would be the proposed ballot language for that. This is a new creation of the internal auditor position. We went over the structure of this at the last workshop, but here is the text of it, and this would be the proposed ballot language to add the position of internal auditor. Just jumping to another section of changes, this is where the Article 3A Charter Review Committee recommended to table this up until the next charter, charter process. The next set of changes is 4.02 and 4.08. As you recall, at the workshop, we just wanted to make sure that the charter sections referring to the police department and fire department were consistent, and so we made those changes. There was a typo that city secretary's office rightfully informed us of, and we have made that here. It refers to fire, and so we've removed that, just overall, to protect the property and lives within the corporate limits of the City of Mission. And that's the proposed language. And you'll see the same language when it comes up to 4.08. And so this is one example of one of those proposed ballot items that we were able to condense into one, because they both reference each other. And just as a side note, we have vetted the proposed ballot language with outside counsel who specializes in election and election ballot language, and so they have approved this, the proposed language as presented. There is also a section that we deleted because it referred to the requirement that the city treasurer be appointed. It's just not the practice anymore, so there's a proposed ballot language to remove that as well. This did get some discussion at the last workshop, and again, this is a chance for council and the public to share their input. But the first one refers to 4.05b, which removes the requirement that Mission Municipal Court judges be qualified voters of the City of Mission. The next section that it changes in the next ballot language would be that it be amended to remove the requirement that the city secretary, or assistant city secretary, be ex officio clerk of municipal court. And that's that redline version you see that got scratched out. And then the last portion of the municipal court judges, that just is a clause we added there to memorialize what is required by state law in the appointment and removal of municipal court judges. And so that's another one that we were able to condense into one, and it just really reflects that it defines the city's responsibilities and limitations in terms of controlling state statutes. So that is 4.05. The next section is 4.06, and this section just is amended to define the duties of the city attorney, provide guidelines to limit the use of outside counsel. And then a section, I think it's 4.07, that would require that the city have a city health officer to be appointed. That structure has been, in practice, changed. We have a public health director, and so we do not practice this. So it was proposed to remove that section. Mayor and council, we're about halfway through. And the last part's going to kind of go a little bit faster. So this is at 4.08. Again, that language is the same. It includes fire, police department to be consistent. As to elections on 4.01, this is actually kind of a minor change, just to make sure that all elections should be in accordance with the Texas Election Code, as may be amended. It's what we do in practice, and so we just included it here, so we wouldn't have to identify it specifically step by step in the ordinance itself. And again, this is that general ballot language that will include 5.01 to define our limitations and responsibilities as per state statute. Now, this is the one that we had talked about, that we had added, you know, requirements for candidates of the mayor city council when filing the application, and we went over the either-or. Either you do the filing fee of $500, or you meet the state requirements in submitting a qualified petition. And so that ballot language will state, shall the city charter be amended to revise? Section 5.03, set out the qualifications and procedures for candidates filing to run for the office of mayor. for candidates filing to run for the office of mayor, city council, deleting section 5.04, ballot, official ballot. 5.05 laws governing city elections. And 5.06 canvassing of elections as matters governed by state statute and renumbering the remaining sections in Article 5 accordingly." And again, as you, as we go back to 5.01, the reasons why we're able to delete those sections is because we're saying that the city of Mission will comply with all state statutes in the Texas Elections Code as per to any requirements for those sections. And that's a continued language there. Section B covers more of what's required of candidates. So Article VII governs initiatives and referendums. And so that's one of the ones where all these sections, 7.02 and going on, can be condensed into this ballot language. It says, "shall the city charter be amended by revising sections of Article VII to clarify that the procedure for calling an initiative or referendum election where an ordinance is sought to be adopted or repealed pursuant to a city petition, including making clear that the power of referendum does not extend to ordinances appropriating money?" This was very important to the Charter Review Committee, since in certain cases, a petition may be brought in which it may request that the city appropriate money. The Charter Review Committee felt that that fell exclusively within the discretion of city council and shouldn't be permitted, just because it appropriates money. Also to clarify the rule for interpreting inconsistent ordinances, to change the period to which an initiated ordinance may not be amended or repealed by city council to two rather than four years and to conform with publication standards as set out by state law. Again, that's, so Section 7.03 is changed, and so that would cover that. 7.06, again, the publication, inconsistent ordinances, and then the repeal period. So all that would be covered under the same ballot item. So 7.11 is just a technical cleanup as to the franchise ordinances. But 8.01 is actually also a cleanup for planning and zoning commission. This actually fully vests the Planning and Zoning Commission with any authorities that the city, that the state may allow it through changes of legislation. And so that's what it does. So this ballot language says that define the authority of Planning and Zoning Commission to advise city council on zoning matters and to provide that the city of Mission and its Planning and Zoning Commission shall have authority of planning and zoning and subdivision and plating of land to the full extent permitted by the Constitution of the laws in the state of Texas. And again, that last 7.11 was just a cleanup. So Article IX is our budget section, our article. And so this will encompass most of Article IX. This ballot language proposes that it will be amended to clarify the time in which a city manager is to present the proposed budget, to clarify the time and place of a public hearing on the budget, to delete the requirement the annual budget include a contingency appropriation of up to 3% of the total budget. And that's just because that's no longer practiced. And then to clarify that the estimated expenditures in the budget shall not exceed estimated revenues to provide for public availability of copies of the budget to conform to the subject and procedures for taxation and requirements of the state of Texas Property Tax Code. That's a lot, but it does cover a lot. So it covers preparation, submission, and budget. These are the actual changes that will be made. Public hearing, effective date. So here you can see on 914, it also includes that the total estimated expenditures shall not exceed estimated resources, which includes the general fund, but also enterprise funds. When our charter was first drafted, we didn't have these enterprise funds, but now we do, so we're including it. And also property subject to tax. It's consistent with state law. And as you can see there, shall be accomplished in compliance with the provisions of the Property Tax Code of the state of Texas. There's also a separate ballot item that refers to Sections 916 relating to the City Department of Taxation and Section 9.19, authorizing the establishment of a joint tax office by joining of other taxing entities. That is no longer practiced in the city of Mission. So that ballot language will be to recommend that those sections be deleted. And we have just four more. So 9.22, when taxes are doing available, that's just a cleanup to refer to the city's assessor collector, not in proper name, but in minor name because the city can internally or externally assign that to anybody. And also consent of property owners. That was also a cleanup, that's more like a language cleanup. And Article IX is covered by the previous one. And like I said, 10.07 is a language cleanup. And that's covered by the overarching proposed ballot language that we've already seen. This is really the two last substantive ones, dealing with personal interest. And so previously, you can see all in red, we've deleted that because it was very particular. And so we just said, when it comes to the city council, officer employed in the city, you know, it says no member of those shall have a financial interest directly or indirectly in the sale of city, in the sale to the city of any land or rights in land, materials, supplies, or services, except as authorized in accordance with the Constitution and laws of the state of Texas. So this says that all employees and elected officials have to follow the personal interest, conflict of interest requirements that are required by state law. And then for drilling operations, this just keeps it in line with our Texas Natural Resource Code, which does regulate and limit what cities can do in drilling operations. So we just wanted to make sure it's legal, it's consistent with state law. So we added that section. But this is all encompassed under that one charter ballot language, which includes Section 11.02, 11.03, saying that we're going to be limited to the terms of the controlling state statute. Now, that was a lot, mayor and council, but I'll take any input or any questions the council may have.
Are there any questions, comments? It is a lot, and the committee did put in a lot of time and effort. And there was a lot of dialogue, which I was pleased with. So we'll move forward.
Yes, so this is a public hearing. We'll open it to the public. But after the public hearing is closed, mayor, I'll just need a motion to approve the first reading.
The first reading.
And then we'll bring it back. And again, for the mayor and council, or the public, if anything comes in the interim, we can present that at the final reading at February 12.
Okay, all right, thank you. Because it is a public hearing, are there any comments or questions from the public in reference to the resolution of our charter election changes? Anyone in the public would like to make a comment? I have to ask three times. So is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or opposition to any of the changes that are proposed? Okay, there being none? Thank you. That was a lot, yes. They hadn't been reviewed since 1987, so it'd been a while, yes. Okay.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close a public hearing on this item. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero.
I'm going to approve the first reading of Resolution Number...
1873.
1873.
There's a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Resolution Number 1873. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item, our planning and zoning recommendations, also in public hearing.
Item number eight is a rezoning for 8.33 acres of land out of a 9.53 acre tract out of the west. 13.335 acres of the south, 19.55 acres of lot 29-8, west addition to shareland of Porciones 53, 54, 55, 56, and 57. This is from AOI Agricultural Open Interim to R1 Single Family Residential. The applicant is Juan Reyes. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located a quarter mile west of Mayberry Road along the north side of Mile 2. Surrounding zones include residential to the north and west, agricultural to the east, and public to the south. Existing land uses include residential to the north and west. It's vacant to the east, and Veterans High School is to the south. The site is currently vacant. The future land use map shows this area's low-density residential. The proposal complies with city's future land use map and surrounding land uses. PNC and staff recommended approval. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the rezoning request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the rezoning request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Okay, is there a motion to close a public hearing?
I'm going to close the public hearing, mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close a public hearing on item number eight. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero.
I'm going to approve the recommendation of planning and zoning and staff.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the rezoning as recommended by staff. And this would carry ordinance number 5428. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Next item.
Item number nine is a rezoning for 48.75 acre tract of land, more or less out of lots 9-5, 9-6, 10-6, and 10-5, west addition to shareland. This was from R2 duplex, fourplex, to R3 multifamily. The applicant is Cave Investments LP. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located at the southwest corner of Military Parkway and South Conway Boulevard. Surrounding zones include industrial to the northeast and west, and agricultural to the south. Existing land uses is vacant to all areas. The future land use map shows this area's planned unit development. The proposal does not comply with city's future land use map, nor land uses. However, the future land use map can be amended. It used to be a planned unit development due to Tony Domets' proposed PUD back in 2006. Nothing was ever done. The city recently approved a R2 zone in September of 2022. Now their request is to consider a multifamily. Staff does not object to the proposal since the property is approximately 230 feet away from Conway Boulevard. PNC and staff recommended approval. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the rezoning request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Karen Pruitt. I live at 2101 Mob Drive in Mission in part of the Meadow Creek Development. And I believe from looking through information that the people who are requesting this, the Cave Investments, are under the same, being run by the same people that own the golf course in my area, which is Cafe Real Estate. And I don't know how much you're aware, if you've been down in that area. But as of right now, that was the Meadow Creek Golf Course and the clubhouse that is currently there has been completely vandalized. Every window's broken out. The upkeep of that facility is nonexistent in the rains that we've had in the last two months. It has collapsed the awnings. There has been no cleanup at all. They are, we have turned these into 3-1-1. And I know that the city of Mission is doing what they can. But as of right now, I don't really feel that there's any need to change that into multifamily. I realize that it's not anywhere close to my home. But on the same token, I feel as though the company, the LLCs, are not doing due diligence with the properties that they currently own.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the request? Anyone? Please step forward and your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Gabriel Guerrero, and I speak on behalf of Cave Investments. All this property of rezoning has nothing to do with the other property of she was talking about. It's like miles away from it. It's a different property. Even though Cave Investment has part of ownership on Meadow Creek, it is not the sole owner of the property on Meadow Creek. This is totally different site and development from Meadow Creek.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone online? Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm going to close the public hearing.
There's a motion and a second to close a public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any questions for staff or a motion?
I have a question for Mrs. Luna.
Yes.
How was this item when planning and zoning was presented? Was there opposition in the audience?
There was nobody present. Nobody showed up. There was no opposition for this to be approved.
Any other comments, questions?
Multifamilies, that, not fourplexes.
It's basically your apartments.
And this is the area right across Betta Salinas Park, right? In the quarter? They started subdividing, and they wanted houses, and then it went to this.
And that's why it was planned unit development, but they didn't do nothing since 2006. So this company purchased the property, and they're starting with a subdivision currently. It is owned R2, so they could do apartments right now, up to four. But they want to do more than four.
Per lot.
Per lot. So that's why their request is now before the board. Of course, they still need to plat and show us the subdivision. This is barely the first process to let us know how many lots, or how many are they going to place per lot? How many apartments?
Have they brought any design in at all?
They brought for a subdivision for the R2.
For the R2.
For the R2.
So that's been submitted.
That has been submitted. But if they're going to change, they need to let us know if they're going to reduce the number of lots and how many apartments.
Because how big are the lots based on the R2 that we have?
They were proposing, if I'm not mistaken, I believe, 100 lots. It was 100 lots of division. Do you recall the number?
For fourplexes.
For fourplexes. The max they could do is four.
But if we approve this, they can do more than four, not a fourplex per lot.
It could be five or more. Right now, they could do four with what they have rezoned right now. But if the council is inclined to approve, then they could do five or more, depending on the size of a lot.
So do they want to do two stories or what? Like do it like...
We haven't seen a rendering of what they're proposing, right? Their first initial step is to go through the rezoning. Once the rezoning goes through, if it goes through, then they'll submit a new one. You might be able to answer that.
Can we see where they had submitted?
Well, the intention is to keep the same layout as it is right now from R2. The intention of moving to R3, because there are lots that... The intention of moving to R-three, because there are lots that, there are like, a small part of the plot has very large lots that could accommodate up to six units. So that small part, that's why we're looking forward to accommodate six units instead of four. But the layout, these lots, they remain as they are right now. We're not asking or will not ask to change the plot. It's just those large lots, we're talking about, they're about eighteen thousand feet compared to a normal ten thousand for a fourplex. We have some lots that are eighteen thousand, and we'd like to accommodate six apartments instead of four. And for do that, we have to, if we get approved, we'll do that in some of the lots.
Okay, so you're not changing the, the plat?
No, no, no.
As presented already?
It's as it is. And we're just trying to build six units in lots as our.
In some of the areas?
Yes.
Okay.
It's like a five to ten percent of the entire subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I just have one last question for, for the planning director, Ms. Suzie. What is the closest in the vicinity of this area where they want to build these duplexes? Where is there more apartments around the area?
In that area, there's, there's no apartments.
Okay, I, I would, I would like to address the person that made the comment because I am concerned with the things that she said, but I will address it with the city manager at a later time. But because there is a need for apartments and different families and stuff, I would like to make a motion to go ahead and approve this agenda item as presented and approved by staff and planning and zoning.
Okay, there's a motion.
Second.
And a second. To approve the rezoning request as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero, and that is ordinance number fifty-four-twenty-nine. Next item.
Item number ten is a rezoning for all of Lot One, Bodine Subdivision Number One. This is from C-two Neighborhood Commercial to C-three General Commercial. The applicant is Norma El Cabazos. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The property is located at the northwest corner of East Griffin Parkway and Bryan Road. The tract has a two-hundred-foot of frontage to East Griffin Parkway and a two-hundred-and-seventy frontage to Bryan Road. Griffin Parkway is a five-lane, five-lane major thoroughfare, and Bryan Road is designated as a major thoroughfare as well. Surrounding zones include large lot single-family to the north, commercial to the east, residential to the west, and office building to the south. The future land use map shows this area's low-density residential. The proposal does not comply with City's future land use map nor surrounding land uses. Staff notes that the future land use map can be amended to reflect a commercial use. The city approved a C-two Neighborhood Commercial Zone for this property back in October of two thousand and eighteen. Staff notes that slowly residential properties along Griffin Parkway are transitioning to commercial. Staff mailed out notices to property owners within two-hundred-foot radius to solicit comments in favor of their request. At the PNC meeting, there was a public opposition. The concerns voiced during the planning and zoning meeting was that the, the Bryan Road was not wide enough for the amount of traffic that a C-P would create. However, PNC and staff recommended approval. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the rezoning Come on up. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, mayor, city council, and guests. Well, that was our house at twenty-three oh-one North Bryan. We had to move because of, of course, the traffic. We've got reports from the EDC, Mission EDC, that's over twenty thousand cars that pass through there. Right now, we're very restricted in who we can sell. We can't even sell to the bank because of the, what it is detailed at C-two. So we're bringing it to the council for a C-three. We want Mission to prosper. We still have our business here. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Anyone else who would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online?
No.
No. Mayor, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item number ten. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any questions?
Mayor, I'm going to approve the request as presented by planning and zoning and staff.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the rezoning request to, from C-two to C-three. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, and that's ordinance number fifty-four-thirty. Thank you. Next item.
Item number eleven is a conditional use permit for a drive-through service window for Mr. Corn Gormet, Corn &amp; More, located at seven-twenty-two East Eighth Street, Suite G. This would be out of lots eleven and twelve and the twenty-foot strip adjacent to lots out of block one thirteen, Mission Original Townsite. It's currently zoned commercial, and the applicant is Mr. Corn Gormet, Corn &amp; More LLC in care, in care of Kenny Amorin. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located on the southwest corner of North Mayberry Road and East Eighth Street. The applicant has been in business in this commercial plaza since May sixth of two thousand and twenty-two. On October two thousand and twenty-three, the landlord acquired conditional use permit to construct a drive-through service window that the applicant is leasing, for the suite that the applicant is leasing in an effort to help boost this commercial plaza. Since the applicant would like to utilize the drive-through service window, therefore the need for a conditional use permit. Access to the drive-through service window is provided off of Eighth Street. Days and hours of operation are Tuesday to Sunday from twelve PM to nine PM. They're closed on Monday. They currently have two employees. For parking, there's a total of sixteen parking spaces that are shared. PNC and staff recommended approval, subject to a one-year reevaluation to assess the new business and compliance with all city codes. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the conditional use permit? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor? Come on. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is, good evening, this is Kenny Amorin. I'm the owner of the business, and I would love to have a drive-through to increase our business if you all decide to give us a permit, and hopefully you do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Who doesn't love corn?
I think we did. It's one of these people.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online?
No.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Are any questions or a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit as requested, and that would carry ordinance number fifty-four-thirty-one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Next item.
Good luck. Item number twelve is a conditional use permit for a drive-through service window and the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages. This is for Los Quates Taco Shop located at twenty-five fifteen South Colorado, Suite eleven. This would be out of Lot Two, Block Two, Santa Lucia Development. It's currently zoned general business, and the applicant is Anna Castillo. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance for the CUP and for the sale of alcohol would be needed. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Colorado and Taylor Road. The applicant is leasing a one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-eight-square-foot suite within the commercial development that includes a drive-through service window and would utilize it, and she would like to utilize it for the proposed taqueria. The applicant is also proposing to offer alcoholic beverages with the meals. Access to the site will be provided off of Colorado and Taylor through existing twenty-four-foot driveways. Customers can park within the shared parking area to dine in, or they can utilize the drive-through service window for pickup. Days and hours of operation are Tuesday to Saturday from twelve noon to two AM, and Sunday from six AM to ten PM. They're proposing to have a total of fifteen employees in different shifts. There's a total of forty-six parking, I mean seating spaces, which require fifteen parking spaces. There's a total of seventy-four parking spaces that are shared within the commercial plaza. For the sale of alcohol, Section six-four, which states that no alcoholic beverage be sold within three hundred feet of a church, public, or private school, or public hospital within corporate limits of the city. Staff notes that there is a school, however, it's outside of city limits. PNC and staff recommended approval, subject to a one-year reevaluation in order to assess the new business. Instill a speed bump at the end of the drive-through window, compliance with all city codes, and CUP not to be transferable to others. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online?
I'm going to close the public hearing. There's nobody online.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item number twelve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero.
Mayor, I'm going to approve to Los Quates the permit drive-through service window and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages.
Second.
There's a motion and a, and a second to approve the conditional use permit as presented. This would carry an adoption of an ordinance number fifty-four-twenty-two and a wet zone ordinance of fifty-four-thirty-three. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Next item.
Item number thirteen is a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages for Chismi Bar and Grill located at fifteen-twelve East Expressway eighty-three, Suites one-oh-eight and one-oh-nine. This would be out of Lot One Re subdivision of Plaza Cantera, also known as Lot Two A and three out of Stewart Plaza subdivision. It's currently zoned commercial, and the applicant is MN twenty-sixteen LLC in care of Malama B. George. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The site is located on the southwest corner of Stewart, Stewart Road and Expressway eighty-three. The applicant is leasing two suites within the commercial plaza for the proposed Bar and Grill. Access to the site is provided from a thirty-eight-foot driveway off of Expressway eighty-three. The applicant proposes to have a restaurant with a large dining area and bar. The menu, the menu will consist of Indian and American appetizers, wings, burgers, tacos. The applicant is proposing to have fourteen booths, twenty-five tables, a bar, a stage where he proposes to have live music, mariachi, and karaoke. Days and hours of operation are every day from eleven AM to two AM. He's proposing to have twenty employees in different shifts for, for, he's proposing a hundred-and-fifty-nine seating spaces, which require fifty-three parking spaces. There's a total of two-hundred-and-nineteen parking spaces that are shared for this plaza. In regards to the sale of alcohol, the restaurant includes a bar component. Section one-fifty-six-three A of the zoning code requires a minimum separation of three hundred feet from the property line of any church, school, publicly-owned property, and residences. There are three residential lots that are within the three-hundred-foot. However, PNC and council have waived the separation requirement during other similar CUPs. PNC and staff recommended approval, subject to a six-month reevaluation to assess this new operation. Waiver of the three-hundred-foot separation requirement from residential uses. Provide a sound buffer to avoid noise from traveling. Continue compliance with all city codes. CUP not to be transferable to others, and the acquisition of a business license prior to occupancy. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the conditional use permit at fifteen-twelve East Expressway eighty-three? Anyone here? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Blessing George, and that's under my mom's name, and I'm gonna try to open something like Double A M.A., Casa Madre, something like a high-end restaurant like Botanera. So that's the way I applied for it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online?
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item number thirteen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Are there any questions for staff?
There was a restaurant there before, right?
That used to be where Blackout used to be.
Blackout?
It's in the same, it's in the same location.
It's actually two suites now, right? I think Blackout, hell, we had one?
No, they had two.
They had both of them?
They had both. It's in the same location where it used to be.
He also owns another place, right?
Yes, on Sherry, which is Taboo Bar and Grill.
I know there's a different location, but any issues on the other one?
Actually, we're gonna be seeing that one at the second meeting in February. As of right now, I haven't gotten the police report for the, it was approved for six months. I haven't gotten any complaints.
When we approve a restaurant, Bar and Grill, do they know whether the percentage of the sales on the food, I believe, has to be higher than the alcohol, correct? If I'm wrong?
Yes. They, they need to meet a certain TABC requirements, and they do have a specific amount that they need to have for food.
Is there a way, I mean, so we're not, we won't know until the following, until they come back for a renewal? That's when we check and review it, see if those sales are compliant?
If they're higher, yes. And that's why.
You can ask for the sales tax report. That would show your, the split.
But since, well, for this particular one, since this is the first time we actually need to let him operate.
Right.
That's why, one of the conditions that planning and zoning was contemplating was adding security. I know he has security at his location on Sherry, but they only approved it for six months to see if there was gonna be a need for that, and at the same time, look at the sales regarding the alcohol.
But he, Suzie, he has been complying with, even at the Taboo, we haven't been getting complaints or police reports or anything like that?
I have not received any. I did ask for a police report, but I have not received it. We, I have not received any calls. I, we have been monitoring the closing time, and they have been in compliance.
And they're only asking till two AM, correct?
Yes, till two AM. And actually, the, the current business that they have closes a little bit before two. So by two, there's nobody in the parking lot.
I think he knows the, the rules and everything based on that. I mean, I hope he understands our hesitation.
We can, as a condition, we can ask him for the sales tax report. Those are done on a monthly basis, so we don't have to wait until, until the renewal comes up. That could be a condition to.
I would like to make that, I would like to make an approval with that condition.
If they submit the sales tax.
Request for approval. Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit as requested, and with the addition of the submitter of sales tax reports to be sure that the, the ratio was complied with. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, all opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, and that's ordinance number fifty-four-thirty-four. Next item.
Item number fourteen is a conditional use permit renewal for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages. This is for Buffalo Wings and Rings located at nine-oh-seven South Sherry Road. This would be out of Lot Two A, Colorado subdivision. It's currently zoned commercial, and the applicant is MS and PS LLC. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The five-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-one-square-foot restaurant is located at the northeast corner of Sherry Road and Colorado Street. Access to the restaurant from both, it's from Sherry and Colorado. Buffalo Wings and Rings has been in operation at this location with a conditional use permit since two thousand and nine. The applicant would like to continue to offer alcoholic beverages with the meals. The applicant would like to renew the conditional use permit. The last CUP approved for this location was on November twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, for a period of four years. Staff notes that this would be the applicant's fifth renewal. Days and hours of operation is every day from eleven AM to twelve. They currently have forty to forty-two employees in different shifts. They currently have two-hundred-and-thirty-seven seating spaces, which require seventy-nine parking spaces. There's a total of ninety-four existing parking spaces, which exceeding code. For the sale of alcohol, this restaurant does have a bar component, which requires that there be no church, school, or residence within three hundred feet. There are no such uses within three hundred feet. PNC and staff recommended approval for life review, subject to compliance with all city codes, and CUP not to be transferable. codes, and CUP not to be transferable to others. We did ask for a report from the Mission PD in regards to the alcohol. There have been no incidents reported for this restaurant. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the conditional use permit renewal? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online?
Mayor, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item number fourteen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimity.
I'm going to approve, mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit renewal for the life of use for nine oh seven South Sherry Road. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimity, and that's ordinance number fifty-four thirty-five. Next item.
Item number fifteen is a conditional use permit renewal for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages. This is for Yoko Sushi's Restaurant located at one twenty-two South Sherry Road Suite K. This would be out of Lot Two Home Depot Subdivision Number Two. It's currently zoned C-four heavy commercial, and the applicant is Yoko Sushi's Restaurant LLC. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The fourteen hundred square foot restaurant is located twelve hundred feet north of Expressway eighty-three along the west side of Sherry Road within a commercial plaza. Access to the site is from two primary driveways off of Sherry Road. Yoko Sushi Restaurant is a family-oriented restaurant that has been in operation with a conditional use permit since two thousand and nine. The applicant would like to renew the conditional use permit. The last CUP approved for this location was on December thirteen, twenty twenty-one for a period of two years. Staff notes that this would be the applicant's fifth renewal. Days and hours of operation are Sunday to Wednesday from eleven a.m. to ten p.m. Thursday through Saturday from eleven a.m. to two a.m. They currently have six employees. For parking, there's a total of eighty parking spaces that are held in common. Regarding the sale of alcohol, this restaurant does have a bar component which requires that there be no church, school, or residence within three hundred feet. There are no such uses within the three hundred foot radius. We did ask for a report from PD regarding the, any reports. There haven't been any reports. PNC and staff recommended approval for life of use, subject to compliance with all city codes, and CUP not to be transferable to others. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the conditional use permit renewal? Is there anyone online?
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item number fifteen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimity.
Mayor, I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit renewal for the life of use at one twenty-two South Sherry Road. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero, and that's ordinance number fifty-four thirty-six. Next item.
Mayor and City Council, this is actually the fruits of, probably the first fruits of the ordinance review committee. There was discussions about relating to the setbacks and allowing persons with disabilities to have a venue process in which they could come and request to the city an exception to, to requirements from the city for zoning or subdivision requirements or building code requirements as it relates to ADA, reasonable accommodations or fair housing, reasonable accommodations. And so, this item is being presented to you. It would be amending Appendix A of the city's Code of Ordinances, specifically adding Article four A, which is the Accommodations Review Board. It's intended to provide persons with disabilities reasonable accommodations to the city zoning, subdivision, building code, and other regulations to assure that all persons have equal opportunity to use and enjoy a residence. And the way this is structured, mayor, is that, I'll start off with, with the triggering issue. The triggering issue is a lot of times persons with disabilities will come to the zoning board of adjustments and ask for essentially an exception to setback, which is, you know, how, how, how much you can build on your, on your lot. Now, because the authority given to the zoning board of adjustments is by state statute, it's, it's highly regulated and it, and it runs with the land. So if there's any exception granted for those requests, it runs with the land. And so if a person with disabilities is occupying that space, but then sells it, then that exception would run in perpetuity. So we actually had this issue come up in the city of Plano when I was with the city attorney's office there, and so what they did is, is they said, you know, we realize that persons with disabilities need a process to request exceptions so that they can have equal access to, to the residence. And so what they did is they said, because the zoning board of adjustments is used to hearing these requests, we're gonna establish them as the reasonable accommodations board. And so what you'll have is the same individuals who are appointed to the zoning board of adjustments will serve on a separate board, and they'll meet either before ZBOA or after ZBOA in a separate meeting, but in, in, in consecutively. That's one difference. The second difference is that with the zoning board of adjustments, you're required by law to have a super majority to approve any exception of variance, whereas under this, it'd be more tuned to a special use permit or conditional use permit that would just require a simple majority of the members. And it would be attached to that applicant that resides there, and once the applicant leaves, the exception will no longer be valid. And it is, because we're dealing with persons with disabilities, the way it's drafted is that there would be no fee associated with this request. They would just have to come to the board with just a reasonable presentation. We're not gonna get into HIPAA information, but just a reasonable presentation of what their disability is and the reason for that request, and then the board will either grant or deny that. But that's, this is a whole new section of ordinance. I, I don't think there's another city in the valley that has this type. I could be wrong, but that I'm, that I'm aware of, this would be kind of a first, and it would really would address a lot of issues that are already coming to zoning board of adjustments, and zoning board of adjustments is hard-pressed to grant the variance in those cases because they say, well, it's gonna run with the land. But this limits it just to the applicant.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions? Comments? Does this? Requires a motion to accept, right?
Yes, it's an ordinance, it would have to be passed.
Yes. I make a motion to accept?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the amending Appendix A of the city, city's Code of Ordinances, and this would be ordinance number fifty-four thirty-seven. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimity. Next item is the consent agenda. Those are items number seventeen through?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, yes.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda item from seventeen through twenty-six. A lot of grants required.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented, and that would carry ordinance number, for item number twenty, ordinance number fifty-four thirty-eight, for item twenty-two, resolution number eighteen seventy-four. Item number twenty-three, resolution eighteen seventy-five. Item number twenty-four, eighteen seventy-six, and for item number twenty-five, resolution number eighteen seventy-seven. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimity. Next item is approvals and authorizations.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item twenty-seven would be approval of resolution eighteen seventy-eight, calling a general election in Mission to be held on May fourth, twenty twenty-four. This would be for council members, places two and four. Early voting would be conducted at Parks and Recreation and Boys and Girls Club at Banworth Park, beginning on Monday, April twenty-second, through Saturday, April twenty-seventh, and the hours would be from eight to six p.m. On Monday, April twenty-ninth, and Tuesday, April thirtieth, the early voting hours would be seven to seven. Election Day polling locations would be held at Mission High School, Parks and Recreation, and Boys and Girls Club Gym at Banworth Park from seven a.m. to seven p.m. We recommend approval of this resolution.
You want to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve resolution number eighteen seventy-eight, calling for a general election in Mission on May fourth, twenty twenty-four. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Item number twenty-eight is the authorization to submit grant application to Texas Water Development Board for the Flood Mitigation Assistance or FMA Grant Program. The purpose of this program is to reduce or eliminate the long-term risk of flood damage to repetitive loss and severe repetitive loss structures that are insured under the NFIP or the National Flood Insurance Program. This program also seeks to reduce or eliminate dependence on taxpayer-funded federal disaster assistance for disaster recovery. The city's proposed project includes several systems for final design and benefit cost analysis for drainage-approved projects. The total project cost will be no more than twelve million dollars, which will require a ten percent match from the city. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the submission of grant application to Texas Water Development Board. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimity. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number twenty-nine is the authorization to award the contract for the FMA and BRIC Program Development, Grant Administration, Civil Engineering, and Project Management Services. The city of Mission has accepted and opened one proposal for these FMA and BRIC Program Development, Grant Administration, Civil Engineering, and Program Management Services. The proposal was referred to an evaluations committee to evaluate proposals based on evaluation criteria and scope adopted by the city. The evaluation committee and city engineers recommend to award contract to Westwood Professional Services, who is selected as a highest-ranked firm, meaning all qualifications, for bid number twenty-four dash one six nine dash twelve dash twenty-seven. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay, are there any discussion or questions?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Hi, sir, how are you? So there was only one person that bid?
Yes, there was.
Really?
There's a very tight deadline on this grant application.
Oh, okay.
So I think that's one of the major factors that gave it play.
And where is this company from?
They are based, well, they have several offices in Texas, but San Antonio is the office that submitted, and they have offices in Dallas and Houston, if I'm not mistaken.
So you're aware of them?
Yes, and they actually have done multiple other projects like this one here in the valley. Wesaco, Brownsville, I believe, Harlingen, and I think the county as well, if I remember correctly.
Who was the evaluation committee?
Evaluation committee consisted of myself, Mr. Michael Izalde, and our other engineer, Mr. Edgar Gonzalez.
Mayor, I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to award the contract for FMA and BRIC Program Development to Westwood Professional Services. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimity, five zero. Thank you. Moving on to unfinished business, I don't believe there is any routine matters. City manager?
Yes, good afternoon. And so I just wanted to share a couple of, or this week is our Texas Citrus Fiesta Week. This past Saturday, we had the Texas Citrus Fiesta Royal Ball at the Mission Event Center. On Thursday, it's the Texas Citrus Fiesta Coordination at seven p.m., also at the Mission Event Center. Friday, there is a gathering for the Parson Mounted Cavalry Texas Aggies here at the Valley Baptist Retreat. They will be participating in the parade this year again. So on Saturday, we do have the Parade of Oranges at noon on Conway, downtown Conway, starting from four ninety-five to First Street. Invite the public to attend. Also, the Fun Fair that will be located on Conway and four ninety-five, along with a, a carnival from ten a.m. to the evening. And then on Sunday as well, we will have the Fun Fair and Carnival available there at the same location, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. City council comments?
Oh, I just, hi, Ms. Barnes, thank you for joining us, and then you brought a couple of friends. Nice to see you, Ms. Townsend, Fern. I would just like to say that Saturday night, we had our royal coronation, and, you know, the young ladies that are participating to be our next quinsiturana never cease to amaze me. The dresses are amazing, they represent their cities and their hometowns, and of course, our, our city amazingly, and I'd like to invite you all to all of our festivities this weekend. It's gonna be fun. Tell your family and friends, and we'll see you there.
Thank you.
No comments.
No comments, okay.
No comments.
Okay. I would like to just thank staff and the Texas Citrus Fiesta Board for an amazing event on Saturday. It was beautiful, the girls were beautiful, and they all had a really, really good time, which I was glad to, to share in that time with them. That's all I have. We're gonna move on to executive session. There's a motion and a second to move into executive session, subject to Texas Government Code Section five-five-one point zero seven-one and five-five-one point zero seven-four. We'll be right back.
Second.
There's this motion is second to reconvene. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. I don't think there's any action on these items. Okay, so I'll entertain a...
There's a motion to adjourn, second.
And a motion to...second? A motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Good night everybody.
Good night.